Then anyone on Zoom, do you need the TV or no?
No.
It looks like it is. Oh, no. Buddy, nobody.
Why does the upper panel remind me of Last Supper?
Fred's kind of even got the halo right.
All right. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this past year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 6, 2024, and the Tourer Times on February 1, 2024, as well as supplemented by published notice of July 11, 2024, to advise of the hybrid format. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information and recordings with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. So let's have a roll call.
Mr. Portman?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell? Mr. Palma?
Here.
Mr. Ralp?
Here.
Mr. Niko? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Vantinen? Mr. Bailey? Mr. Blunt?
Here.
Great. Let's have. Let's allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no old business to continue, nor do we have any, any new business with the approval of the October 2024 minutes. Those minutes were sent ahead of time to the members of the board for review. I was not present last week. I'm sorry, last month.
So I read them. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
So why don't we start with the discussion of the new affordable housing numbers? We'll start with that. And then we'll do the meeting dates and then the master plan. Does that sound okay to everybody? Just go a little bit out of order.
Did you guys just start your meeting?
We did, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, the alarm came in.
You did. I, I don't know how, the alarm, I thought the alarm was off and then I unlocked the front door. Cause DJ was here. And I didn't touch the alarm, but then I think when somebody came in the front door, the alarm went off, so I ran up to the panel and I pushed in my code and I think we're good.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's start with the, with the new affordable housing numbers. I believe we, we, when do we approve? We approve that the board has to approve the new, the new report in, by when? Is that June?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
I think it's June.
July of 2025.
I think that's, it was June or July, I believe, of 2025, we were active, reviewed, reviewed and adopted the report as a word.
Yeah, so I had March. The numbers become finalized. We accept them. The numbers become finalized by March. And then I had, I had more, I don't know where it is. Then I have ultimately July of 2025.
And by numbers, you mean housing numbers, portable housing?
Yeah, so what I have is we had, they released their numbers. We have, I think, until January to accept or provide documentation for why we think there's a different number. And then by April, or March, rather, the numbers go into effect, I mean, a lot then, minus the vacant land adjustments, I believe.
I have the June date also.
Yeah, June.
I had June.
How's the fair share?
So Rich, do you, do you have the, the information?
I did not. I was looking up, checking also.
Oh, okay.
So Doug, I have, I have written here. So on, okay, on October 20th, our new quota calculation came out. This is what we were expecting. This is what Mike Edwards expected, told us to expect. And then before Jan 30, January 31st, Borough needs to adopt a resolution. That's, I kind of sort of remember there was some dates that were at odds with, like, yeah, like hour up, like our housing deadline is June 2025, but if you have an obligation here in Fairhaven at the council level, that's, that's like disjointed from.
But I'm relying upon Mr. Edwards, what I said he gave us. And I'm sure we're, we're gonna be, we have some time. But I, I'm sure that once we see that, council knows, council, I'm sure will take the approval in actual regard to the option. And we'll take direction from there.
So it says the prospective need is 92 units.
That's, as, as I'm reading the document.
Yes.
I read it the same way. I pulled up, pulled it up. From the site. That's what it says we have. Now, that doesn't remove our overriding obligation of the bigger numbers, Mike Edwards said, but for the fourth round number.
Right.
That's our, that's the new number going forward. I think it's for 25 to 35.
10 years.
20, 2020, 2035. That's, that's our fourth round number. We had other numbers on the go, go back. Take a look at that. As to what our cumulative number is. And I think what we did with regard to our affordable housing ordinances last time was come up with a reasonable plan that how to take care of what our current obligation was. And now that.
That, that perspective, the prospective units are the, that's the un, that's the unmet need. The addition to the unmet need? No, that is, so it's 92 is the total number of units we're required to have, correct?
For this, for this round, I mean, if you were to complete your entire obligation for affordable housing, it would have been also addressing the other round coming into this one. This is the new number coming into the next 10 years.
In addition to the old number.
Correct.
So the old number was like 470.
371. We have, for our unbanned was 367. So we're adding 92 to 367.
And that's why they refer to it as the fourth round.
Right.
Going forward.
But it's in addition to the previous numbers, so.
Correct. This is all based on 2020 census and they had.
And that's before any vacant land adjustment?
No, I think that, I, I, I think they rely upon the data that we have provided that.
No, I don't think that's correct. I think my understanding is that number is not taken into consideration anything that we can do to mitigate those numbers. So my understanding is that that is the obligation that DCA has used their calculations and come up with. Now, we have until January to either accept.
Okay. I agree with what you're saying.
And then, and then from January to March, we go through that process and then in March, the number is locked in minus any concessions for proximity to trains, other credits you may get, vacant land adjustments and all those things. So that happens after March, is my understanding. I'm not an expert on it, so I could be wrong, but that's my understanding. And then I think we have from March to June to I don't remember that face. I was gonna say provide the resolution, but I think the resolution actually has to be done prior to March. I could be wrong, but there, there's another trigger to that June date. So, and my understanding is it is that, that 92 is before any other adjustments. So what I'm hearing from other towns is many of them are accepting the number that's given because the metric to, to get to it is pretty definitive. That's not to say that, that, that's what we have to do, but.
But what governs us, though, is the, is the, the overlay, right, which, which designates which areas we would potentially put those units. And what if that, do they, do they make it, does anyone know if they make it, if they make a judgment or an opinion on whether that overlay is sufficient?
Well, no, we, we have to, each time you review, we have to identify a certain number of areas that are going to be capable of providing.
So the overlay.
It's like 10% of, I don't remember the exact metrics, maybe 25. It's actually, it's 25% of the ultimate need. So if, if that 92, let's say it gets reduced to 50, right, then we're gonna have 25% of 50. So that.
So the overlay would have to provide enough, 25% of, of that theoretical 50 plus
Right.
all the ones from the prior rounds.
Yes, we've already satisfied prior.
Yeah, I don't think prior round, no, the prior rounds were all done in the prior rounds as it relates.
Okay, so then the overlay has to be modified to, to be, overlay would have to be modified to accommodate the 25%.
So we're gonna have to identify land that can be designated as an affordable overlay. Which is gonna be challenging, given.
So. Well, that, that's me going, and that's why I agree with Mr. Anderson saying. What opportunities are presented by way of available land? And based upon what we've done today, we're, we're it's, it's always gonna be the same issue. You've got your plan in place for, for going forward for up to 2025. And now where can you find more for 25? There, there, 35. So I, while you don't have to reinvent a wheel in certain instances, it has to be a realistic plan that you can say, okay, if there's a challenge, this is how we can do it. And that's how we get protection from a builder's remedy, saying, here's where we're going to do this, here's the area we want to do this, and here's how we can get the blessing of the court.
Are, are we required to? Would we, in order to in order to accommodate the additional units? Like, so, so Betsy, you, you just, I, I think suggested, like, you could change the density. Are you required to rezone? Like, if you don't have enough, if you don't have enough space in the overlay, are you required, like, would you be required to have to rezone in any way to, in order to then accommodate?
I don't think so.
So your zoning acts as a, as a sort of
Protecting.
Not protect, but, but as a, as a boundary, as a bound, an upper or a.
Well, to, to a, to a certain extent. Let's take an extreme and extraordinary circumstance. Let's say all of your zoning was three acres zoning. But, but you know, that, that wouldn't pass muster. There, there, there is discussion where you may, you may need to provide opportunities for greater density than you currently do. But as to rezoning, it doesn't mean you suddenly have to take, you know, commercial properties and make them affordable housing. You need to provide an opportunity that's realistic to, to accommodate that based upon opportunities in your municipality. Where do you have vacant land? Where do you have things? And even our last plan. You know, I, I know folks were concerned when we said, well, you know, if in the future the church property becomes available, and it was, what do you mean, you're gonna condemn it? No, no. You're condemning it. They were saying, that's not an opportunity in the future for where we can place something. Same thing with regard to our, in a sense, we really did rezone with regard to our, I think it was our Public Works property. Because we, and we subdivided to provide an opportunity there to put some housing in there, so.
Yeah, south of the DPW. South of the DPW. I think we've pretty much used any available property.
And that's, and you, but you're gonna have to reexamine and see, cause you know, what properties have become available, what properties are there. There is also some different formulas, I understand, but I have not usually the specialists with regards to these things get into this. I have not dug into it. We're screwed, which we didn't belong to do. But there may be other opportunities. Years ago, there were opportunities that we, another municipality where we'd approached, said, look, we've got all of these. You know, overnight, suddenly we had second dwellings in the back, Caesar Community Town. They've been there for 30 years. They were never formally approved, but they're there. My grandfather, can we now get? If we bring those up to code, can we get credit for it? And at least at one point in time, the council of affordable housing said, no, you can't do that. Now I understand there are opportunities to do that. Where if you bring them up to code, restrict them, you may be able to use those for your counts. There may be other opportunities in municipality that can work with someone who in the past has been told, look, there's no two residential units on the lot. That's non-conforming. We're now, perhaps there may be an opportunity where we can at least bring that up to code, allow that to happen, if that's the way mayor council wanna go. Again, they're going to design that. We will obviously take a look at that. We will obviously weigh in as to where there are opportunities to do that.
You can overlay 550. I think you missed it last time, which I happened to.
We post 550?
There were.
The former, right?
Yeah. I mean, you know, it was carved out last time. I think you missed it, but, and, and, and the other thing is, they're very nuanced, like to your, your point about zoning providing protection. Yes and no, because the, you know, e- even the stuff around vacant land credits. Technically, you may be out of land horizontally, but you've got air. So if they want, they can start imposing vertical things from a builder's remedy standpoint. So the importance of coming up with a plan that's appropriate is to avoid Aratons liability from the builder coming in and suing for builder's remedy to try to get vertical force upon us. And so we need to be super thoughtful in how we accommodate.
That's right. When we use the term zoning generally, they're, Mr. Anderson's zoning also involves density. And that's what you're seeing. They were going to, they're going to oblige you to have greater density, perhaps above a commercial property. That's because now there's an opportunity.
Would our zoning limits on height, would that be still in place?
You know, if.
Cause I think we went up to three stories in the business.
The answer is, it depends. It, it depends, you know. And that's why I think rather than get into the hype. You wanna be, you know, start picking out those areas where you say, look, if I am going to do something, where how does it work with my traffic as opposed to, you know, something just popped into an area that that property became available. Now someone's coming in and saying, you don't have a viable plan. I'm gonna give you a viable opportunity. And here's what I'm proposing. And, and force your hand to do that. It needs to come into, cause most of these things don't ultimately go to trial. They are settled. You know, they're settled as to, okay, how can we accommodate this?
I think we're also limited by fire and rescue by the size of our fire department and the height that the ladders can go. It can't force you to bind them fire trucks.
I.
I'm not, I'm not gonna say on record as to what kind.
Yeah. I don't think they will as long as everyone is thoughtful enough in, in having overlay and, and how you accommodate the prospective need that 25% in, in the new plan. If it's done well, I think you award the place. Isaac. You know, I mean, look, it's what Mumper did in, in Rumson a handful of years ago, right, on Bingham Place and then on on the other, right, to do on carpentry. Then where he's doing the affordable behind vows, but, but, but that was exactly that. I'm gonna sue you for builder's remedy. You guys are exposed, so I wanna be able to do my townhouses here and I wanna get a bunch of density and do townhouses here. And they said, no. And he said, well, then I'm gonna have to sue for builder's remedy. And the solution was, you have this spot on carpentry that we can pack in 13 affordable units to accommodate a revived need. And assuming we all agree to that, then I won't move forward and do more density than I'm proposing. So I think we can, I think we can accomplish it.
92 units of all, I have to come up with.
That's a lot.
It's, that number's gonna come substantially down. I think it's gonna, once you take, I don't know what the calculation is for the vacant land.
It's a 25% increase on, on more than that, on what we already have.
But, but we will, it, it, the, the numbers are big everywhere this year. I mean, they're, they're really big, the fourth round. And we're gonna, we really have limited vacant land and limited ability to do it in this town outside of going vertical, which will change the character of the town, right? More so than the 38 feet that was done last round. I think if everyone looks carefully, we can probably find a few places that were in overlay, but we can provide additional overlays before we start looking at additional height, because that's the other option. All, all, all under all with the affordable attorney's counsel, right? I, I don't know. And I know enough about it, but I don't know.
No, 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 right, right. So, so do we, so I, Rich, we didn't come up with the overlays a couple of years ago. I don't, that wasn't a planning board thing. That was who did that? The, the planners?
That was the affordable housing planner, along with Michael Edwards.
Yeah.
And just circling back on some key dates.
But, but I think the planning board did have.
Yeah, the planning.
We, we had, but we didn't, like, I, I remember that it, the, the graphs and the maps came to us and then we, they were done, we, yeah.
Is that higher rule?
At the time, yeah.
Yeah.
So that plan. So by June 30th of 25, each municipality must adopt a housing element in fair share plan. That's what you're talking about. By January 31st, which is in two months. That's where each municipality must adopt a resolution with determination of its present and prospective fair share obligation. So that's, that's the resolution to accept whether or not you say, okay, we're gonna accept the 92. And then there's other deadlines where interested parties can challenge that number. The municipality can challenge the determination. And.
And so I assume Mike Edwards, they're, they're gonna determine or we're gonna be advised whether we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, whether we should accept the 92 or not. So we could, we could theoretically say we don't accept this.
And then July 1st, the third round expires and that's when the fourth round starts.
Oh, that was July, right.
Yeah.
So in January, that's the resolution that's, the council has to put forth the resolution.
By January 1st.
January 1st, 31st. The council, right?
The municipality adopts it, so.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. Cause when, when Mike was here, we talked about that we're supposed to advise, our, our role is to advise when the council has to pass the the resolution. So we should see that, I would think we would see that, or need to see that resolution next meeting.
Yeah. We should go on with Mike to determine, like, because these timelines are really fast and, and, and they're hard. So there, there are, there are some pushes at the moment to give some forgiveness to the timelines because they're gonna be really hard to meet, but we should be talking to Mike now about whether he agrees with that number. Right?
So we should, we should probably have Mike come to the next meeting and the December meeting. And then, Betsy, do you know if, if there's like a draft resolution yet?
I haven't seen.
I haven't seen, okay.
But I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be with Borough Administrator on Thursday, so I will start that conversation with him. Because otherwise, nobody's doing anything.
No, he's.
No, I, I don't think it ever rests quite for a day. He's on it.
Yeah.
No, I, I think they are. I, I just.
He had a call, like Edwards, I believe, this week. So there, things are moving administratively. And then also consider bringing in your affordable housing planner at some point as well. Cause the two of them as a team, they're kind of.
Yeah, I don't know who it is. I thought it was higher rule.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, it's higher rule. No, I thought we kept them out as our affordable housing, not planner, just affordable housing.
So we have two planners. We have an affordable housing planner, which is higher rule, and then the other planner. CCH.
It's Kendra Lee and Kyle, the municipal.
Yeah, yeah, Iron Rule's no longer.
Okay.
When?
Who is it?
Kendra Lee. Kendra Lee, Kyle, and Kyle are the municipal. Were the health of the planet and, and the administrative agent.
Okay, good to know.
I don't, I, I don't know who they are.
Okay.
We need to get them involved.
Yeah.
Well, we need, I mean, the council, I, I mean, I'm sure, like you said, the Borough Administrator and the, like, the council has to adopt it, but we have to, it has to be adopted by January. We would need to see it at the next meeting, I would think.
Make the determination as to whether or not that's a realistic number for us, not understanding the fact that there'll be adjustments to it. I think the first question is, are they going to accept it? I'm sure we're going to hear from the professionals that they've hired as to whether or not this is challenging. If it's not challengeable and everybody's agreeable, then they take that moment and then we start working with them.
All right. So do we need Mike Edwards at the next meeting? It sounds like all this stuff is happening outside of planning board. I mean, for educational purposes, it does sound like we need.
I feel like we need, but we need.
Are we gonna be, are we gonna be involved? January resolution?
Why don't we circle back with Chris and see where the process is? And then, cause Michael came here, what, two minutes?
Two meetings.
That was super important. That was real.
I'm gonna see him Friday at 11.
Okay.
Okay.
And I mean, you know, if, if we can accommodate a hand if we didn't pass, if it's just a phone in, you know, we can do that too, as to but he will probably be circled back to with regard to whether that is or isn't the number until he's given information from council. He's not going to want to announce that publicly until council has has made the determination and received their counsel.
As a council, we have not heard from them.
Okay.
I'm guessing. I'm guessing he's pretty busy now. He's not, he's not just representing us in all this. I'm guessing that there are other town views companies he's gotta get back to. I worry, I, I would love to be advised as to what, you know, the, the, the next steps will be, council will decide. But do we really need to jam up Mike Edwards' calendar with a planning board specific meeting? Or is it, should we just wait to hear from council on what the, you know, the accept or reject?
I, I, I think, well, I'm worried we're gonna get something, or have to call a special meeting if the, if the, if the deadline for passing of the resolution is January
31st.
31st.
Two meetings between.
We have two meetings. We have two meetings between then and now, so actually, but then we're gonna be forced to to sort of provide. I mean, it may be worthwhile to get an update at the next meeting.
The process is, yes, we agree on the number. And I think that that's all that's happening at that time. Not, we have a full plan in place, it's, yes, we.
Yes, we agree with the number, yeah.
U D C A have come out and said our number for the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-five, ninety-two units. They published that, now everybody's digesting that, chewing that, seeing, okay, is that a realistic number? Did they use the, and they, and their report that they have, they show you the methodology, et cetera, et cetera. It's the, I think that the decision dispersed made by council up or downs, is that, is that going to be the number now, when we work from there? In terms of where we go from there, I think we're gonna have the same process.
Through all the, so the ninety-two units is the perspective, so so do they, do we get what the adjustments are? At at that, or we're just, the nine, we're agreeing at the ninety-two, which is the baseline? And then at some point, all those adjustments would start to to sort of flow in? Okay, so then maybe it's not that.
I just think it's like not in our hands, it's like.
But I, but I, but I think. Mr. Cordella has has given you sound counts, let's see what Chris, let's see what Chris York is doing.
Yeah, we we let's see where where they're at, and then, but but we can also just ask if. If, you you know, we can ask Chris, like, i- is there, you know, can you give us an update at the next meeting, or can somebody give us?
That you can share with the board on a confidential basis, we'd love to hear it.
I'll talk to him on Friday.
So before we go into the, so I I think we're good for for this topic. Uh, before we go into the next topic, I'll just ask any, any, any members of the public have any, any comments on, on this? Anything they they wanna talk about, and there's no one on Zoom, right?
Can I just ask you a question, did you say that we may be having an application come before us?
Uh, we are not, we don't have the change of jurisdiction, it's only four.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they were, they.
There was two, right, there were, there was seven seventy-five and then the. Okay, and so both those go to zoning and don't have to ever come to us, or may come to us?
Okay, we'll go to zoning board and do all their site plan review and subdivision.
Yeah, you have the option when the, when the higher relief or the more burdensome relief goes before the zoning board adjustment, to do one-stop shopping. And that's, and that's where the zoning board, where it usually doesn't hear from a plan. They're usually.
I just didn't want us to get backed up, we have too many things on our agenda.
I just, I just wanted to ask, so we have, we as a planning board have no affordable housing deliverables between now and next meeting? Doesn't seem like it.
Alright, um, so let's, let's look at the dates um for next year.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't know this, at the reorganization meeting, on twenty twenty-sixth, January nineteenth is Martin Luther King Day, it's also Monday.
Yeah, she's. Twenty twenty-six, you're talking about, oh, 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 yeah, oh, oh, it's the last one, Dan.
The nineteenth?
Oh, so I'm sorry, it's the one.
Okay, so let's start, so the reorganization, uh, the first meeting in January is one, two, it's the third Tuesday. Um, of January twenty twenty-five, I I don't. I guess.
I think that one's already been approved, that last year.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, January fifteenth, that one's already been published.
Okay, so then we move to February eighteenth.
So that, so that's the day after the Monday of President's Day. I I I don't know the public school calendar, we should always. My point is just, there is, that is a day of no school uh for, we used one of the local private schools and that could affect. At least one person's attendance, uh, but I don't think that decision should be made uh based on one person, um, so if the public schools are all good. Then I'm sure that this conflict doesn't really make a difference in this one.
So are we saying, so February eighteenth, you you.
I I will, I might not be there, I don't, no, no, I I will likely be there, but there's a chance that you travel that extended day. But I just.
Uh, March eighteenth, I think is good.
That is the middle of private school spring. Uh, both the eleventh and the eighteenth would be caught up in the two weeks that a lot of the private schools will celebrate. There's probably no solution to that, I would just keep the date.
Unless the twenty-fifth, unless March the twenty-fifth, but then you're, well, it's only really a month, and it's a short.
Well, except for April eighth is being proposed.
Oh, yeah, the following, yeah, so we're kinda.
I would keep the eighteenth and go with the eighth.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have, we'll do that, okay, so we'll have to go with April eighth. Uh, May twentieth, I think it's fine. June seventeenth. When you say R F H graduation, Sheila, is that, is that, is that the the weekend, the weekend, no, no, I know, is that the weekend before or the weekend after?
No, no, it's the day of June seventeen.
Oh, wow, so it's, oh, I see, okay, yeah.
I just wanted to call it out.
No, that's a good point. I didn't realize they did it during the week, I I thought it would.
Yeah, June seventeen, last day for students and graduation.
Would you, should we do June the tenth?
I mean, I didn't know if it affected anybody, I just figured I'd put it down, so if it doesn't affect.
No, but it, I mean, look, it.
That's a town thing.
That's a town thing, people, people are gonna be, there's gonna be people attending parties and things like that, right, like I've assumed.
That is the last meeting right before we adopt. Maybe some attendees, I don't know, maybe.
The the options would be the tenth or the twenty-fourth.
Let's do the tenth.
What's the date in June twenty twenty-five, it it, that the, that the. That the fair share element has to be adopted.
When in June?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
It's June thirtieth, so wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't it make sense to do? Well, I was gonna say, June, do June the twenty-fourth, because it gives everybody more time, but then, that's probably if we need to do anything. Okay, so we're gonna go with June tenth, Sheila. Alright, July fifteenth, I don't see a problem. Uh, August nineteenth, looks good. September sixteenth, again, I think looks fine. Uh, October twenty-first. Eighteenth is fine. And the sixteenth, I think is fine for December, so.
October twenty-first is Diwali, whatever that is, it comes up in my calendar as a holiday.
I have that on the twelfth.
I don't know, it comes up automatically on mine, so I have no idea. Got it, it comes up in my phone automatically, so I don't know if that's, but I don't know if that's the date that we. I don't think nobody has all anything, I don't think.
No, there's no, there's no, and, yeah, I don't think there's anyone here that, that observes Diwali, so. Alright, and so we're gonna go with, for twenty twenty-six, we're gonna go with January twentieth, that was just a misprint, yeah, okay. Well, okay, so let's just real quick, so we've got reorganization on January twenty-first. Of twenty twenty-five, we got February eighteenth, March eighteenth, April eighth, May twentieth, June tenth, July fifteenth. August nineteenth, September sixteenth, October twenty-first, November eighteenth, December sixteenth, and reorganization twenty twenty-six, January twenty. All good, okay, so let's, uh, I'll I'll motion that we, oh.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I was just checking against only you.
So I will um motion that we accept this calendar as as I just read out and and as revised, started.
And so these dates, I just wanna say, so these dates, I'll just confirm, double check against the borough, uh, all the the other. And then this will get approved in January at the reorganization meeting. But really, they asked for it this far in advance, mostly because they wanna put together the borough.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 this is.
Challengers, so we're good, if you don't, you know, hopefully you won't hear from me that we have any conflicts, but I think. Uh, Mr. Wardle.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Maryland.
Yes.
Mr. Rawl.
Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Ed, no?
Yes. Alright, so uh, next item is the, is is the master plan uh reexamination, and so. I think what we wanted to do tonight. Was at least put members of the board, um, I I guess. You want to put members of the board as as sort of the the leaders for each of the elements. That we were going to, that that we're gonna be subject to, or that we think are gonna be subject to the examination. But then we add uh members of the board that are uh, you you know, can can start to. I guess, lay out what, for each element, what needs to be discussed and and. Obviously brought forth to the public and and debated.
That form survey questions, or are you going to do that?
Well, I think we're gonna have to do the survey questions within each of the elements, right, so the. So we would have people in charge of each of the, or people sponsoring each, you you remember the board sponsoring each of the elements? And then using, and then then deciding what survey questions need to be. Need need to be proffered for for each of the individual elements, right, because I mean, you, we've gotta do it on an element by element basis. And so, um, if we look at the, um. So the the elements.
Planner come to the next meeting to help us with this.
Well, I thought this is what we decided the last time Mike is here, was was that generally we would have uh a member of. Because I I feel like we're kinda going in circles, right, so I I feel like we need each person on the board to pay. A piece of, you you know, take each of the elements and then have. Have each of those people decide, or at least preliminarily bring to the board what. Areas in that element need to be addressed, or what areas within that element weren't addressed. By the prior reexamination, so we had the reexamination in twenty sixteen. And the idea was that, y- y- you know, we would, the, for each element, what. What was done between the reexamination in twenty sixteen and now. To address what was in the reexamination, and if all elements had, or, I'm sorry, all items within an element had been addressed. Since the last reexamination, then what new, what new items need to be. Put in the reexamination to be addressed going forward, or perhaps it's just, we just accept what's. What's in that element now, meaning there's nothing else, nothing else to do. For each of those elements, and then for each of the elements, like, like in order to help determine what needed to be done. We would, we would release a survey to the public. You 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 know, going through each survey, asking questions within each element. I mean, that's how I. Right, I mean, I think that's how I look at it, is, I I mean, does anyone disagree with that, at least that construct to get started?
How many elements, we have six elements?
There is, uh. So it's, very, very, it starts, yeah. There's community facilities, circulation, open space, recreation. Historic preservation, land use. Housing. Renewable energy. And then there was a list in your memo, um, Doug, that that had the other. There were things that by law needed to be acknowledged or or at least addressed.
Yeah, in your, in your, if you've got your last reexamination report, it outlines nicely as well. But it's gonna be referenced with regard to your elements, there may not have been some of these topics, but. Major problems and objectives relating to land development in the municipality at the time of the adoption of the last reexamination report. What was wrong, and then and then within those things, maybe there was something that was concerning. The land use element, maybe there wasn't, but what were those things? To the extent that such problems and objectives have been reduced or have increased subsequently to state. Burnout problems with municipalities at the shore, we need parking, we still need parking.
Right, but there there were elements in in your, so so those were the elements, right, like there. You're, we're gonna take the major elements that are within the plan, right, and then there was. There's land use plan statement of strategy on smart growth, storma zone, saving environmental sustainability, like, so we have to have a statement on, or we have to at least have.
Those, no, sorry, I confused that, those were things that have changed in the law. Since our last reexamination report, those items that I highlighted were just, were things to. Changes at the state level, there are things, considerable changes at the state level since the adoption of the land reexamination in August twenty sixteen. And I just highlighted those, some of these are not necessarily applicable to you. I I think I may have mentioned the the county's regulation, but you've already addressed that, but what this was designed to do was. Here's some other things as you go through, here's some changes in legislation.
Right, but it it says here, like, for this one, it says, like, any. By land use plan element adopted after the effective date of the, must provide a climate change related hazard vulnerability assessment, which shall. And so the way I read this is that, if you're doing a master plan reexamination after the date that this. At the, after the date that this statute was amended, you have to address it in your master plan.
I agree. That that one is applicable, and that, then that gets down to of the five topics. As you get into A, B, C, D, and E, that's referenced there. This, this overview informed this man.
Got you, okay.
That, and that's where, C, to the extent to which there have been significant changes in assumptions, policies, and objectives. That's also my way of thinking, changes in legislation, if you're going to have. Specific changes recommend that, recommended for the master plan or development regulation, if any, including underlying objectives, policy standards. Or whether a new plan or regulation should be prepared, recommendations of the planning board concerning the incorporation of redevelopment plans. That can be their own, how much we want land use element, master plan, et cetera. So I mean, if you're. If, and that's how this last reexam was structured also. Then you take a look at your, and I, and I think you can use that as an outline, you, you can be in charge of the land, so you can be in charge of the housing element. You can be charged with circulation, traffic element, all of those. And then I would say false reference to your reexamination report. Was there anything specific reference there? Or was there a problem there, has that now been addressed? Okay, then from there, what new things in this list of. The topics I say, has to be addressed that's not there in absence, that's what I tried to do here. Um, so that, yes, whoever has the land use element. We're going to have to touch base with our planner and say, okay, one of the types of things that we need. To consider the land use plan, state of the strategy on smart growth, storm resiliency, and environmental sustainability. So that whoever has the land use plan, check that off, we need to do something there, and we should probably get our, our planners to help us. What, what kinds of things are folks doing, what kinds of things do we need, cuz again, this is the. This is the skeleton. We're going to need to do those things, and there will be recommendations for. Based upon what we've already done, we've already done some of these things, some of our store management regulations. Have been informed with regard to those things, some, some of our environmental sustainability, where we have, you know, our checklist. We've already got those things in, but I think if we. If you focus in then on exactly, land use element. Take a look, this is what we have to do, let's touch base with our planner, what things are happening in master plans. Or some of the master plans you've already taken a look at. What kind of values do we need to do to put the skeleton of it on, and then what types of ordinance will come from there? That means former mayor council, these are things we need to do.
Right, we did, so when Mike was here, Mike Sullivan was here. Or was it Mike there, I forget. So when he was here, like, we determined that the next step we have to be. To put different people on the board in charge of different elements to start the construction of the survey, and the survey was kind of. Part one, or the starting point of. What the, what the town, what the public felt needed to be addressed. In the reexamination, clearly, there's a statutory and a sort of legal. Element here of what needs to be addressed, that you have to include, and that we're gonna obviously need planner. And legal counsel help in, in drafting, but there's also an element of, of what. You know, in each, within each section or element of the master plan, what, what nee- what does the public feel needs to be. Addressed, and I, I think we've gotta get started on that piece, I. Soon, and so we've, I, I kinda feel we've been spinning our wheels a little bit. We've had other el- uh, uh, other items on the agenda the last couple of times. And we skipped last meeting, right, so I kinda feel like, I, I, I mean, we've gotta sort of, we're gonna need. Members of the board to volunteer to take certain elements. Of the, of the plan and, and be, you, you know, more or less in charge of, of those elements. I, I thought that's how we agreed to proceed, right?
So what are, you wanna go through the elements of my.
Yeah.
What are all, what are the six?
Yeah, we have to, using your term of skeleton, what are the.
Right, what are the six elements that we need to.
Right, so if you go.
I don't have it in front of you.
Right, I, it's.
Land use.
Yes.
And what to encompass in land use?
The current uses of, of land before to bury. And we're going to see that in our master plan, you get all those set down, so you're going to have. So much, so much as commercial, so much as residential, so much as, yes. Set aside for open space.
Yeah.
How do we current view?
Yeah, so that's the zoning, essentially, the codification of.
You can have a zone and have something that's not conforming to the zone. Might be a different use, so you want to, you wanna take a look at those kinds, kinds of things. You may need to, we may need to update our land use map because of.
Right.
I'm sure our land use map now doesn't have. If we're going to do that, the overlays that we now have for those kinds of things, so that's going to be something.
Yeah.
Land use map needs to be changed with regard to the M and M, with regard to all those other things.
And that includes. The codification within there, how those, i- if any of those uses need to change in terms of.
Yeah. It's gonna have some zoning to it. Do we have new zones that aren't recognized in our master plan?
But that's not a separate category, that's.
It, it, it melted, it melted.
Okay, two, that's one.
So it's, it's land use, housing, housing, we're, I feel like we're doing, well. You, housing, circulation. Facilities.
Utilities.
Utilities.
Is facilities and utilities two separate things?
It is, yeah. Exactly.
Oh, was that it? Five?
No, this, wasn't there.
Um, we, we have, we have things. Subcategories for those things in circulation plan element.
Is historic separate, or historic is six?
I don't think historic is a.
Historical fall under land use, probably.
Probably before, yeah, yeah.
And I think somebody said renewable energies, that, under something else.
Probably.
Historic, historic preservation is, is an element. It says, should include the following master plan elements, historic preservation is one. And conservation, recreation, and open space is one also, yeah.
What was that last one, Fred, sorry?
Conservation, recreation, and open space.
Conservation. I'm happy to, to work on land use, if uh, nobody opposes that. Thank you. Thank you. I'm up for open space, unless somebody. Else is interested in that.
So that is actually though, conservation, recreation, and open space, so it's.
Yeah.
It's a three items.
Dave, I'm happy to work on that with you.
That'd be good, I would like that with the recreation, I'm good with the open space and conservation, as I work in the natural area, but yeah, you some help with recreation, great. Thanks.
I can do circulation.
What's up, there's facility, utilities, and housing?
Yeah, and facilities, I feel like. There's been a lot done, yeah, right, so I don't know how much. You know, updating for facilities. Right, listen.
That may be it, that may just be, you know, during our last reexamination report. There was a reference to have a new facility for police, there was a.
I, I mean, it was. Police, DPW, all that's being upgraded, and so there's probably not much to do.
You can say that, but then, you know, that will then inform your next decision. What kinds of facilities do people want in the community, you're still going to have some.
Yeah, that would be questions, yeah, that's.
Community center, and somebody want, you know.
We have a community center.
No, I'm saying.
There's a phase two to it that we haven't addressed yet.
Yeah, I mean, those types of things, do you want to have, you know. Again, not suggesting, but I see some municipalities, you know.
Town hall.
I'll take facilities.
Okay.
Take a look at, again, what was said last time, what were the problems, the checkoffs are there, and then. If there, if we've solved all those problems, what do we think needs to be addressed on both floor and face?
Do housing, it seems like the affordable housing is an interesting.
We could do, I, I was, there's gonna be a lot of. I was gonna suggest too, so, I was gonna suggest that housing just be a board. Sort of as a board. Because it's, I think there's a lot of technical and legal, maybe not technical, but legal aspects to the housing part that. It's probably something that we should handle as a board with. Advice.
Utilities and stuff, okay. And if the, the housing, you know, that's fine for me, but, fine too.
Well. That, I mean, I think you should take a look at your master plan. Take a look at your reexaminations. Or at least, certainly, your, your last one, I think if we have, did we receive the reports? This may be more important, Sheila, did we receive the uh, zoning board of adjustment reports to planning board?
You know, the carrot tells.
You said, I think you did.
I thought I had.
You did.
Came up. Zoning meeting, I, I thought I had, but I have to go back and look, there was quite a few.
Take, take a look and see from what the zoning board is doing. How that may impact your particular element, probably more towards housing, perhaps toward circulation. Um, I, I would, I would say that, and again, this may get into more of the flesh. But it may be an observation making your reexamination report, which is, you know, there seems to be a consistent theme of. Variances granted by the zoning board of adjustment, or this type of. Issue in housing, and we're always granting variants of that, if you're granting variances all the time.
Yeah.
You may want to make a reference in your master plan of like, it, it's not ideal to govern by variance. If, if we're always granting the variances.
Right.
In certain areas, then maybe we should. Say that you wanna take a look at these things. And my way of example, because there's municipalities, and they were always granting variances for patios. And it was in the backyard, they were all, in a sense, you were stealing space from yourself. So rather than have everything come, we're just taking patio variance, eventually they figured out a form, and they'll say, look. If it's going to be so high off the ground, doesn't create, you know, impervious surface, and it doesn't encroach greater. Than so far into your rear yard. It's permitted. It, it cleared up a whole bunch of work. For, for the, for the land use board, same kinds of things, if you're seeing those things granted, if not, that's fine too.
Sheila, you sent, did you send that? I think I saw it.
It's an annual report that they do, but I just realized at the last meeting last week, that it's only done through. One of us grew last January, it was actually twenty twenty two, so they're behind in getting that complete, they're hoping to. Complete twenty twenty three by the end of this year, possibly for April in January, so maybe I'll have that for you as well, but so.
What is that, that's the.
A year behind, it's basically, I think, a sum, a summary of the variances granted.
I see, so it's data, that data that says this is.
So you can, you can sit down.
At Quigley used to ride.
Doug's point. Quigley?
Yeah, she used to ride it.
Yeah.
But she's not on the zoning board anymore.
Yeah. And I remember seeing it, I, I thought you had sent it around. If you don't mind, that would be great.
Yeah. And I mean, but I have to pull together some information for twenty twenty three, so as soon as I have that available, I can share that with you even before they. Put their report together.
And I, and again, I, I leave this to, to your thinking, just to put out, not, not to worry about whether we're doing this process in a municipality. Or they wanted to create, and I think we've already done these kinds of things. You know, opportunities for enhanced participation in this district, they wanted to encourage certain type of development. Realizing when we talk about goals and objectives. But you understand how this ties in, those are your special reasons. When, when a. Someone comes and they're looking for a variance, and they say, okay, you know, what are the positive criteria within it, well. You know, this, and you're gonna hear things like, well, this is gonna, you know, it's not gonna decrease light air density, that's one of your special. It's one of your goals and objectives. If there's something that we decide that we're going to want to encourage. You may want to think about putting in something in your goals and objectives. A- again, I think you started to see some of that in your reexamination reports, but if there's this particular area. You know, if it's, if it's to afford, you know, to provide opportunities. Without vertical development or affordable housing, maybe we put that in as a special, so we, we clue the, those folks in. That, w- we're not, you know, we're going to meet our goals for these kinds of things, but we're not particularly. Excited about increasing density or vertical height of these things, but if you have something along those lines, you put that in as a special reason. That then gives you the ability to go on to that with the variances. Okay, it's kind of, it's a little, little vague, but in one, in one municipality, they wanted to encourage. You know, mixed commercial, residential. And redevelop and re, in a redevelopment area at the north end of town, they put that in as one of their special reasons. So then when those projects came in, where, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna. Completely demo this, and what we're gonna do in light of your special reasons is, we're gonna have first floor commercial. Where the parking is inside, you know, on, onsite for all residential, you know, under the building. And, you know, two floors or three floors, or whatever it was, residential above, but all residential parking is gonna be contained onsite, so it did several things. Began to alleviate some of the parking problems and allowed for the creation of, on the commercial end. They created or made a recommendation that for the parking underneath. You can split it. No weekend parking for commercial, but weekday. You know, from second time, it's gonna be residential, such and such after, it's, it can be mixed. So you'll get a bonus for that, those are the kinds of things you can begin to start thinking of, once we get maybe past the survey stage. Do we want to change our goals and objectives to incur the type of development we would like to see? Does that make sense?
And that survey phase is important, because I feel like. Wouldn't, would, do we know the count on the last one, it was like seven hundred people or something, right, or six hundred?
Like, I thought it was.
Whatever, right, nine hundred people, and we have six thousand residents here, how many, eight, eight thousand, nine thousand, so. Right, because at the end of the day, we're here to help guide these codes. To ensure the community is getting what they do, right? So, you know, we have a community of nine thousand people, and we're getting nine hundred respondents. You know, maybe ten percent in certain tracking is good, but I feel like a lot of people have missed, because what you're gonna get is. You know, old school people that have been here forever, that don't want change, that want this, you're gonna get new cool school people that want this and want this change. And there's a huge middle point that you're gonna miss, right, so I, I don't know. I don't know the solution to get more engagement. And maybe it's doorknobbing, right, something like that, because I feel like a lot of people aren't aware of it, I know. You, you know, I've missed it in towns that I've lived in, and so, I mean, that's gonna be, for, for us to really look at this as comprehensively as we can. It's gonna be important, it's gonna be important to drive as much community participation as we can, and I, I don't know the solution to that.
Well, we, we talked a while ago about maybe adding a couple of open houses. Um, to kind of, you know, engender.
Yeah.
Interaction with the community, besides like just putting the survey out, so that's something we should look at, I think.
Yeah, I, what, yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to it, but I think it's a, I, I think it's a pinch point, I think it's a problem that. Right, if we, if we really wanna hear our community, we need to hear more than nine hundred voices, would be my personal opinion. Not to say we can't do our job without that, right, if that's what we get, but I think we should take it upon ourselves to try to, or, 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 or the. Professionals that do the surveys and, and, and put them out to. To really be, it's a small picnic community. There's gotta be a way in this community, in my view, that we can get more participation, I don't know what it is, but it feels like we should be able to get.
And I think also it's important to make sure people understand the importance of when the process that we're going through. Cuz I've, I've talked to a lot of people over the past few months, and a lot of them didn't know what the master plan is.
Yeah.
And how important of a document it is, so I think it's important that there be an educational process as part of this whole um. Uh, journey that we're having.
And we also have a much bigger social media presence. That's what we had four years ago. So that will help us, but I think an open house, couple of open houses are great, that really helped with lead.
Yeah, but the, it was, it was, and that was good for the facilities, right?
Open houses.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we have a lot of different needs of reaching people, but unfortunately. People just don't respond.
I, I know, and, and that's why I was thinking like. I, I know, and and that's why I was thinking like, you know. And I, the doorknocking is a pain in the ass, whatever, but I can't tell you how many people, whether it was, you know, BOE, council, whatever came to my door, and I happened to be home, and I was like, oh, you know, and and you hear them out for a couple minutes, so even if it's just as simple as, listen, there's a survey coming out. You know, we're, we're looking at some changes to the town zoning, we need to know what's important to our residents, and so, would you mind? You know, just making sure it's on your radar, maybe it's not right physically forcing it down the throat, but just a it's gonna be coming around, you can find it on social media, there's gonna be this open house, you can find the survey at this location, or if you wanna give me your email, we'll email to you, whatever it is, right, and and I don't know that that's the solution, it's super time consuming, but it just feels like whatever we can do to get more voices heard will help us structure it more comprehensively.
You were, you were.
What I was gonna say, Middletown is going through this right now, and what they've done is, if you go to their website. They have a page dedicated to the master plan. They talk about the process, they talk about the update, they talk about the subcommittee, they talk about the consultants they have. And all the documents in one place, so you can click on as a user to see the maps, the plans, the data. Very well done, um, they're doing public workshops. They have resources here, they talk about the whole process, so it kind of educates the reader. Like, what is this all about?
Right.
And it's pretty in depth, but I think it's a model you can look at and say, you know what, this may work, or maybe a smaller scale version may work. Cause it'll even assist us with mapping out the correct route to do this. Without having to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
You know, that's really what it is.
Yeah, I I also think we, I mean, we should start thinking now about reach out, because, you know, we can't, we can't start doing this in like May or June.
No, I, I think, yeah, so I, I think when we spoke to, you you know, as as I, I remember the steps we're gonna take, right, so we now have at least the beginning of of people to 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 chair each of the elements. So we need to understand, or or those people need to go into the, each of those elements and understand what, like, where we're strong and where we're weak in terms of what, you you know, what the reexamination suggested be done, and what actually has been done. And then develop survey questions from that assessment. Then those survey questions would go to the planner, and they can look at those survey questions in the context of I'm sure they designed, you you know, through their experience have designed tons of survey questions. And comprehensive surveys for this, so we would feed them a, y- y- you know, our initial assessment of of what's been done, what was done well, what hasn't been done in each of the elements. Come up with some survey suggestions for that, give it to the planner, and then have the planner come back with the survey. And then critique the survey, and then start to, and then at that point, I think we would then start to engage the public.
Yeah, the only thing I'm saying is, I mean, I'm wondering if sooner or later, we should start socializing with the public now. That we're, that we're in this process.
Probably right.
And not just like, not just, this is gonna come out the wrong way, not just dump.
Dump the survey out, no, 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 I agree that that's, yeah.
It's like some rule, we have to tell somebody like something seven times or whatever before it's like sinks in.
No, I, I understand your point, yeah.
Obviously, we're not at the point where the survey is ready to be pushed out, but just giving folks a heads up that, hey, first of all, we're undertaking this process generally, so they understand what's going on, and then here, maybe, we don't give, we don't give them the full timeline, but again, key milestone dates.
In general.
In general, what's going on with the timeline, and the fact that we're planning to issue a survey. Right, we need their feedback, and then presuming we're open to hosting open houses, let them know that we're planning those as well. So they just get that out there, to start socializing with people, and then so they're prepared. When, you know, when the survey comes out, when we schedule open houses, they'll be hopefully more engaged.
Yeah, I agree, I I, I mean, we should probably, so I I'll look at the the Middletown site, and then we can talk to I think to Neil's, we could talk to Christopher about um, something out there. I've, I've seen the Borough put baseball posts out. You know. Top goal, kind of just like an update FYI kind of thing, like, we could put something, I'm envisioning we could just write something right now, basically could go out.
Right.
Like tomorrow, and I don't know who writes that for the Borough, but you know.
Betting on us all that.
I mean, we could, we could just say something to the effect of like, you know, the, the last night's planning board meeting, that we agreed to start, you know. Well, the planning board's been working on for months, the the master plan reexamination. You know, this is, we have a full year before things are due, however, we're gonna start socializing, I don't feel like we should.
No, cause, yeah, I think that's it, because I'm not, I'm certainly not being critical of anybody in town, but talked to a lot of people over the last few months, and you know, I was talking about the master plan, the reexamination process. And a lot of folks, like, cert- aren't familiar with the master plan, we've been with much less that we're undertaking this process, so I think there is a real um need to help educate folks in town that, you know, we're doing this. And it's important to everybody that, you know, we have full engagement, or as much, as much engagement as we can.
Right. Okay, we, we can have something uh put out. We have a a memo from Doug that has high level milestones or dates, so I feel like we could put something out that says you know, the planning board's beginning the process of its master plan reexamination. The reexamination is due in August twenty twenty six, or will be approved August twenty twenty six, there'll be a series of open houses for each of the planning, for each of the planning document elements. Uh, there'll be surveys and other engagement forthcoming, please watch this space or this area for for updates.
Yeah.
As we proceed with the, or something to that effect.
Yeah, and just like, one, one, one nuance is to hopefully be clear on what, what the, what, what the process, well, not just what the process is, but why people should care about the process, right, and what we're doing, right? Yeah, yeah, totally, two, two, two things, if I could, just, as you go through your elements. Have your survey from the last time again.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're gonna be fine, again, that may help you, it's like, yeah, this is still relevant, this, you know, if nothing else. This should be in the survey this time. Um, and and I leave you with a follow up thought, you know, the only time people really pay attention to what's in the ordinances or what's in the master plans.
Excellent.
When some, yeah, some dramatically impacts them, or I think that, I think the most populated hearing I attended was the Duncan Delance one, where, you know, some, how, how, where some people were, how does it happen, it's like, well, it's a permitted use. But how can this be permitted now? It's like, well, the master plan did this, and then the ordinances informed that, it's, it's a permitted, you know. That's when they find out, so if nothing else, if you want to understand, we, a lot of folks don't even know there is a master plan.
Yeah.
That we have, you know, we have a circulation element, that we, you know, we do these things. You know, this is how we take care of it, because most folks, I think, are, are, I know different than me, if my trash is being picked up. The mail's getting delivered, streets are clear and clean, downtown's feeling pretty good, I'm not coming to one of your meetings. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I have enough money.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not coming to one of the meetings, everything's, everything's working fine. This is their opportunity to make sure it continues to work fine. And and have some input, have some meaningful input to that.
Bring pitch force to the conservation element. Your tree, your tree.
Resource inventory, which I think, you know, which we adopted as part of the I really think it was a great job.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and and maybe, maybe as you do that, just to touch base with those folks, you know, what, what are you working on, what do you wanna see, do, do you want to? Usually at the zoning board of adjustment, you know, when we're doing things, we're, we're increasing maybe some impervious as a trade off. Want to make sure we have dry wells, now, now we're hearing about rain gardens, now, now, what are, what are these things coming up, what are they working on? Is it something that we may want to at least highlight in, in our master plan? And and you've already got those folks, they're, they're like own legislative team.
Right, right.
So, uh, sorry, I was gonna say, it's sort of our next meeting, I, I think we should have a goal of everybody reporting out.
Yeah.
Kind of where they are in analysis.
Well, so, so I think, I think, yeah, so, so, uh, so I think read the, the last reexamination, understand, I think, from your point of view, what what was accomplished since the last reexamination, so there's there were things that were put in, in that element in the last reexamination, where those items accomplished. Somewhat accomplished, that you, you know, fully accomplished, and then ha, you you know, to your knowledge, has anything else a- arisen, or do you feel anything else has arisen or needs to be addressed? Based on your experience, and, and then come up perhaps with, with some survey questions for the, for the elements, um, for your element, and then we can collate that and send it to the planner and say, this is how we've, we've started the, the process, ask for feedback. And and I'll get with Christopher you like, and Josh, and look, I, I mean, we're gonna have to start, I mean, there's gonna be feeds, right, like, it's gonna be, like, we're gonna start spending. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna need to spend some money here, obviously, to get all this kicked off and have the support that we need to accomplish. What needs to be, what needs to be accomplished. So, um, and then I will take a look into the website, um, as recommended by Rich, and come up with something to, um.
They even have, it's called an ideas wall, and you can go on and post a comment, and you can say you know, it, it's.
And that's on the municipal site.
This is on the municipal site.
No way.
For Middletown and
Really?
The.
Modern suggestion.
Gesture box.
It says, the idea wall, the ideas wall is a platform for Middletown.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta put your name that, like.
The ideas wall is a platform for Middletown community to share ideas, concerns, and priorities for the master plan and how it will shape the township's future, we want to know. What do you like about Middletown, what would you like to see in the future, where do you see the potential for improvement? And what can we improve to enhance the viability of Middletown and make it a more livable? Make it more livable for all community members, and then, you know, people will just posting various things on housing and
Yeah.
preservation, and open space, and some of the stream corridors, and the creeks, and the water, and I sent the link to Sheila's, you can circulate this.
Okay, we, we just got, we just got circulation. I, you know, we, we did a, we did a pretty good study not too long ago with pedestrians and both walkways.
Oh.
On the acts of transportation.
Transportation, yeah. But, you know, use that as a resource.
Yeah.
Folks that put that together, I think, you know, again, and I'm, I'm sure, because we did that, you know, that's not technically part of the master plan, I think we we may have done the adoption of that.
Mm-hmm.
I have to go back and check my notes, so.
It's referenced.
It, it, yeah, so. And how, and how we're doing on that, because that was a, that was a layout plan of this is what we need to do, so we need to do later, what we want, um, you know. It was very comprehensive, I think that's gonna help you a great deal.
Yeah. Doug, any ideas off the top of your head on utilities, I mean, you know, like, dive in, right?
Well, you know, I, I, there's so many things that I guess, you know, with regard to the the credits for the um uh, just, we need a circulation, vehicles, the EV, um, utility, something's coming to mind, although obviously there's a number of things that touch it with regard to the storm regulations and those types of things, I think, um.
They're grounded.
I think it has to.
I think it's the.
Yeah, I think it really has to be, it's sort of effort, everything underground. Those things, I think the DPW did a very good job in making sure that in the future, you know, they had.
I mean, big up.
Or at least had some.
Huge things on our huge.
Yeah. Um, you know.
Rich would buy that, right?
I don't know where it's exactly, but you know, the fact that, the fact that I don't, we need to make a place for it in the master.
Okay, yeah, well, I'll look at the previous reexam and, and survey and, you know.
And 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 the service, by the way, our town goes out.
Before, uh, before we adjourn, I, I'd like to ask, uh, any, any comments on anything we've, we've discussed here?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay, soon, come in soon. Um, anybody else, anyone else on the board?
Is there an update for the um affordable house, like, do we know what's going on with M and M?
Oh, excellent.
I sent the, I actually sent them a text like a week ago. And they responded, I, I have a contact over there, and
Yeah, you, yeah, there's.
I just said, we were, we had, you know, I've been getting some questions.
They're, and this, here now, they're, they're all, this is all done and ready to go, they just need to.
They filed for permits, we're moving them through resolution appliance and everything.
For a while.
For a while.
Yeah, they're ready, I mean, they're ready.
They're ready, we're ready, what's?
Yeah.
It's weird.
Isn't it?
It's something that, yeah.
Yeah, something, yeah, exactly.
Take the utility section.
I, I took.
All right, maybe I can work with you, because it, it really has to do with infrastructure, stormwater.
Yeah.
Training, where, where are we, where, where are we looking for?
Stations, these things.
Station facilities, all that.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Sheila, one, one quick question, um, is, are there, is there are there any applications in the pipeline, I know we said the two got shifted to the DOMA, but then, so outside of that, there's just nothing that's in the pipeline, right? Okay. Well, I'll move to adjourn unless anybody else has any comments.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I also wanna, but I just wanted, some of the ideas that we talked about two weeks ago was like you know, i- i- this might be more of a survey thing, like, you know, does the town want more restaurants with liquor licenses, you know, are, are, are we?
Yes.
Are we, yeah, like, everyone says yes, but then, but then where does that fit into the, the reexam, right? You gotta get, you gotta get the liquor license. But didn't, didn't something happen, like? They were, they were supposed to change the way you can access issue and get them, they're supposed to open up more per community. Um, there was a hu- huge, huge amount of pushback, similar to what happened with taxicab. Uh, you know, given the money at stake, and I think it's on ice, although I don't know, I haven't looked into it in a little while.
Yeah.
That was an initiative by Murphy, right, he's owning that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then I think they paused it, although I don't know, do you, do you have it or not?
The EVC?
With the, yeah, with the.
No, I haven't looked at it in a while.
Yeah, yeah, neither have I, and yeah, I don't know. Just a couple of thoughts, I, I spoke to somebody this week, um, you know, in the wake of the whole tree, uh, tree ordinance, um, thing. Somebody suggested that we in the master plan, think about, uh, maybe environmental goals as a town, like where it's like, uh, air quality, maybe um, canopy, percentage of canopy, you know, as, as a, as a, as a, as a you know, as a metric that we can maybe, if it's forty five percent now, maybe fifty five percent is our goal, something like that. And and then, uh, I think schools and like, you know. What's the goals of the schools here in town, I feel like, I don't know if that's part of any of our elements, or is it?
Well, it's, it's community, I think, at one level, it's community facilities, I mean, you can probably ask, and it's, it's a matter of of the document, just to, to reach out whoever has this, you have what is known as a long range facilities plan. That every board of education has to, has to put into the state, and it's, it's some of its current, some of its things we're going to do in the future, and what it does to the state is to be foreign to them as to what things may be coming down the pipeline that may be eligible for enormous rock grants, and what's the state's percentage going to be, so if you have a long range facilities plan, you see what they're planning on, I mean, I think a month ago, we were talking about how parking was arranged over at the school and other types of things. What do they need? Cause I think the last time we did, I guess, was it a ref, something we took a look at with the schools.
Yeah, they were, and I've been here twenty nineteen, and I know.
They had, they had wanted some things and, and needed some things to be done, and that may follow into the circulation and, and various facilities. You're gonna find a lot of them is dovetail.
Yeah.
Um.
You can include.
You get all the long range facilities plan, and touch base with the school, you know, wh- what are you guys looking to do in the future, is there gonna be another facility, do you see a, a more building, what are your population?
You can look at your enrollment numbers, historically, present, you can put all that in there.
And that's what that long range facilities plan, what it will tell you about, what are they looking to do? And then you're gonna see, okay, if they're gonna be doing that, how might that impact our circulation over there, you know? Maybe not, not, are, are they gonna be doing things year round, are they gonna be having facilities more as a community facility, or seeing more schools? Not necessarily Fairhaven, but more schools when they put in a media center that have things that are available on Saturday for certain groups, to miss, seniors to bring them up to speed on computers and those kinds of things. If you're going to be doing that, and there's gonna be more use of that facility, that's gonna impact your traffic, that's gonna impact you in a number of things.
Is the master plan the appropriate place for, like, if you wanted the schools to seek that blue ribbon designation, is that a place for the master?
I, I don't know that that's a master plan issue, I know all the schools are, are shooting for them, I mean, you know, it just, it just means greater recognition. I don't know that that's a master plan issue. I know all the schools are, are shooting for them. I mean, you know, it just, it just means greater recognition. And I think in the future, it will probably also be a way in which to. This is my personal theory, has no basis in reality, but I think just like so many other things, when you get certain designations. It may become. And putting you a better place in line for certain grants. You know, if you've got those things, if you're doing that, but I don't know that that's appropriate for the manager.
Okay.
They're, they're a separate body corporate in politic, to the extent that, you know, they, they run their school district for those things and have their goals. I don't think it's something to be mastered, but again, if they're gonna have facilities, it's a bad, that's different.
Anybody else? Anything else? I'll move to close.
Second.
Wait till it turns to dead, what else is this?
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Yeah, we really.